Seven P M. You have roll call, please.
Dankert.
Here.
Callops.
Here.
Godsky. Iverson.
Here.
Reamer.
Here.
Schatzinger. Sorensen.
Here.
Split.
Here.
We have a quorum.
In the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
On behalf of the Ripon Ministerial Association, I'd like to say a short prayer tonight for the blessing of all families who will be gathering for Thanksgiving, and may we give thanks tonight for all that serve our city in all the different departments and all the different ways, including our emergency. And in this moment, let us recall what we are thankful for in our own lives for just a moment. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, is there a motion to approve tonight's agenda?
I will make a motion to approve tonight's agenda.
I'll second that.
A motion by David, second by Doug, any discussion? None, all those in favor of approving the agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That is approved. No one has signed up for public comment tonight. Moving to our agenda items. First item is the 2024 financial audit. We have Riley Hunter online here with us from CLA that will present the 2024 financial audit for us. Riley, go ahead.
Thank you. So I am going to try to share my screen quick. Looks like I gotta send a request, Adam.
That should be over, yep.
Okay. Can you see everything okay?
Yes.
Okay, perfect. So I'm gonna touch on a few different files, mainly the governance communication letter here that I have up right now. All right, that one way. Okay, so my name is Riley Hutter. I'm a manager with CLA. I have over eight years of experience, mainly performing audits, compilations, reviews, budget assistance, and rate case studies, and some other various consulting. But majority of the time, you know, spent in the state and local government field, working with similar cities, municipalities, and utilities similar to the city of Ripon. So as I get started here, this is the governance communication letter. Each year, you know, we complete this, and I guess our goal of the audit is to offer our opinion on the financial statements and if they're materially correct. So this year, again, similar to previous years, we did issue the highest and best opinion, which is unmodified opinion stating that your financial statements are materially correct. The governance communication letter has, you know, a lot of standard language in here, so I'm gonna touch on some of the larger topics, I guess, that stick out to me that are important from an audit perspective. The first being accounting policies. So we do evaluate policies each year and kind of disclose if there's anything new or significant that has changed within the financial statements. So this year, there are a few new changes that you will see in the financial statements. Note 4F, we did implement a new GASB standard this year, GASB 100, related to accounting changes and errors. Again, we evaluate different GASB standards each year and work with the city to implement those. So GASB 100 is really some new disclosures based on, you know, if there's changes in funds and how those are presented in the financial statements. So nothing major besides presentation there. We did also evaluate GASB 101, which is related to compensated absences. And again, the standard, we had to take a kind of an in-depth dive into your different sick leave, vacation leave, PTO policies, and the impact of adopting those new standards this year was immaterial to the financial statement. So again, nothing big changing there, but again, those are things that we work with the city to implement each year. Your financial statements do include accounting estimates, and again, we review those annually, and they're disclosed each year. There were no difficulties encountered in performing the audit. Uncorrected misstatements. So uncorrected misstatements are items where they don't rise to the level of being material, where we have to record those. This is just letting you know that there are leased assets in, I believe, the water and wastewater utility, that we do take a look at those each year, but they did, are not recorded in the financial statements. I believe it's just a couple leases. And again, those totaling about $100,000 and $116,000. So this, again, very similar to last year, you'd have the same note. We identify and disclose that annually. Corrected misstatements, so these are items that are material and detected as a result of audit procedures, and items that we have adjusted throughout the audit process. So again, some of these are very similar to last year, GASB 68, 75, some Wisconsin retirement and life insurance adjustments, recording depreciation, additions and disposals for capital assets, some cash activity and investment adjustments, and a few receivables and payables adjustments. So those are, I guess, identified as part of the audit process, but those are corrected on your books. So we work with Sean, and Sean, you know, makes those adjustments, and, you know, we're in agreement with those items. So disagreements with management, no disagreements. There were a new, again, I mentioned this earlier, but GASB 100, just another disclosure that we did implement a new GASB standard this year. No consultations with other independent accountants, no significant issues, and no other findings or issues. So I'm going to kind of get into the financial, you know, some numbers now, and starting off with the governmental funds. So your general fund, fund balance, this, I'm gonna point out this line right here, this 1.3 million versus 1.4 million last year. So your general fund unassigned fund balance did decrease slightly, about $40,000 this year, and we'll kind of get into a few different indicators in a little bit related to that, but just something to point out, slight decrease in 2024. And feel free to stop me at any time if you have any questions. Your total special revenue funds did increase slightly, most of that is your library fund balance increasing. And then, the most important line, I think I wanted to point out here, is within your capital projects funds, so your general capital projects, that fund balance did increase significantly this year. There was a new debt issuance, and that helped increase that fund balance, but it is still in a deficit position. So just something to be aware of, you know, from a budgeting standpoint, and how, you know, how the city is going to kind of work to get that out of the deficit fund balance position. And I know Sean has looked, you know, at that, and we've had discussions with the city too, on kind of what the plan is going forward to keep that fund balance increasing and get it into a positive scenario. Below, so here is the general fund, again, just kind of broken out into different buckets. So over the past five years, you can see that non-spendable has stayed fairly consistent. The assigned piece has also stayed almost exactly the same, and then your unassigned fund balance has really hovered around that 1.4 million to 1.3 million dollar range. Again, very consistent, slight decrease from last year. But tying that back into your, the city's fund balance policy, the city currently has a fund balance policy that the minimum unassigned fund balance is expected to be 20% of general funds operating revenues. So this graph below kind of, you know, visualizes how that fund balance has changed over the past few years. And this year, you are almost right exactly at that 20% range. So it has been decreasing over the past five years, but you are within, you know, your minimum fund balance policy range. So just something to be aware of, something to kind of keep in mind, that, you know, we obviously recommend that you wanna try to stay above that and, you know, see that increasing over the next few years. You know, the city still, the general fund balance does continue to be in good financial condition, but again, just something to be aware of. Continuing on to the water utility, I think one of the key highlights here is to look at your operating income and loss over the past two years. So last year, you know, there was a loss of about $5,000. This year, that turned around and changed to generating income of about $109,000. And that's what you'd want to see. You had your water rate increase, and, you know, you want to be generating that operating income so you're able to fund your water operations and, you know, your infrastructure and capital projects in the future. There was, I'll point out this capital contribution too this year. That was, that increased significantly due to water tower, your water tower painting. So I believe one of the TIDS did contribute that capital contributions, you know, in 2024, so that's a major item here. But again, that's a revenue and expense, so there's no net impact of that because the TID did pay for that. Moving on to rate of return, so this was initially when we did file the PSC report earlier this year. So this was based on unadjusted numbers, you know, without our audit changes in there. So going forward, this rate of return will increase, and, you know, with your rate changes. But again, just something to monitor, and, you know, I think the city is well aware of that the water rate increase was necessary, and, you know, going forward, that you'd expect that to increase. The composition of water net position over the past five years has increased, and again, that's what you'd want to see. And your, you know, a majority of your net investment is net investment in capital assets. So as, you know, time goes on, the water utility has been investing significantly, you know, in your capital infrastructure, and you can see that increasing over the last five years. Moving on to the wastewater utility, so again, looking at that operating income line, it did decrease slightly, down to $195,000 versus $204,000 last year. But again, that is, you know, a healthy operating income that you'd wanna be seeing, your utilities generating that income, again, to pay for your future capital, future repairs and maintenance that may be coming up over the next few years. So again, operating income there, your change in net position, you know, did increase, which is what you'd like to see. Again, the utility does also have large investment capital assets that has been increasing over the past five years. That pretty much covers all of the governance communication letter that I wanted to go through. I am going to move on to a few different things. This is within the financial statements. As a part of our audit each year, we do evaluate internal controls within the city and prepare, you know, our schedule of findings and responses related to those internal controls. So there are two findings this year. They are both repeat findings from last year, so no surprises. The first being preparation of your annual financial report. This finding is very common, you know, for probably 90% of our clients, where CLA is preparing the annual financial report on behalf of the city. So this is really just disclosing that, you know, it's probably not, how should I say that, probably not time efficient for Sean to, and the city staff, to be preparing, you know, over 200 pages in your financial statements. So this is saying that we prepared on your behalf. And then the second finding is related to adjustments to the city's financial records. So as a part of the audit process, we did make some material journal entries, and that is, you know, what we're really disclosing here. So as we go forward, this is a finding that I think the city could, you know, correct, and I think that's a goal to strive forward, is to work on, you know, cutting down some of those journal entries. And I know, again, Sean has already dove headfirst into, you know, all the journal entries that we prepare, and it's looking, you know, hopefully in the future that this finding would go away, which is what we would like to see. The next file, kind of building off of the internal controls, is the management letter. So we have a few management letter items that are not findings, so they're lower level than the two items I just recently discussed. But the first being policies and procedures manual slash segregation of duties. So as a part of evaluating internal controls, we do recommend that the city does evaluate, you know, some of their policies, kind of creating a comprehensive manual that coordinates, you know, financial management among various departments, kind of establishes some more clear procedures throughout the city, and really simplifying and operating practices into a standardized, you know, procedure and reporting that really could streamline things, create efficiencies going forward. Credit cards, so during the audits, we did observe that there is some lack of supporting documentation for some credit card transactions, specifically, you know, some itemized receipts or, in particular, some subscriptions or, you know, smaller things like postage. So just be aware that, you know, going forward, maintaining that documentation is really, really critical, and, you know, establishing a policy that all credit card transactions are supported and really maintained going forward. And then our third, lastly, gift card management. Throughout the audit too, we did observe that there was some issuance and redemption of gift cards that really lacked some consistent oversight or not regularly tracked or reconciled or reviewed by an individual other than the person, you know, purchasing or distributing cards. So just, you know, from an internal controls perspective, you know, really segregating those duties, having two people involved, really tracking, logging, and kind of creating a policy is just, is good standard practice and something that you'd really wanna see with going forward with gift cards. And again, these are things that, you know, we've worked with the city on, and the city is aware, and I think has really been making improvements, significant improvements over the last year, you know, with Sean really just getting in, diving in, getting to know the city, has really done a great job, you know, taking things head-on, and, you know, we really appreciate, we really appreciate that, and, you know, think it's a good policy to keep going forward with. So just wanted to kind of, you know, say thanks again for that. And if there is any other questions at this time, I'm gonna stop sharing my screen. I think this is pretty much everything I have from a content perspective. So if there's any questions, now would be a good time.
Anyone have any questions? Julie.
Thank you for your review and going through this tonight. When, in the manual that you recommend, does CLA provide sort of best practices, general, you know, policies, procedures, forms, reports for guidance that you can send to the city for us to look at and see if maybe that matches up to what we already have or wanna add it?
Yes, yep, yep, we can, we definitely do that. And I'm not sure if some of that has already been shared, but I know, yes, we can definitely share that and work with the city going forward on, you know, what we see standard throughout the industry and how, you know, we can strengthen those policies and procedures going forward. So yes, that is definitely something we can do.
Okay, thank you. And then, I guess, I was just thinking about gift card, then I can reach out to the library myself, but I'm a longtime library supporter, and I didn't realize, gift card, what are people paying for?
Yes, this has been an ongoing situation specifically at the library where if they're doing a event or a program, you know, they give away prizes.
Oh, I see.
And so they may get those dollars donated, or there may be, you know, funds used to get gift cards, and then somebody wins it, and there's really no control over those. So, you know, we're not saying there's anything, you know, some wrong, you know, something wrong going on, it's just certainly an opening where those gift cards could end up in the wrong hands or in an unintended use. And, you know, similar, it's just tracking and documentation, and the credit card thing is mostly things like a recurring expense of, you know, something that the library or, say, like EMS, if they have a Hulu subscription for employees to watch TV downstairs, and it just reoccurs, and we don't get the invoice every month, those are the two main things, and we can address those. I think Sean's worked with the library to clean up a lot of this stuff already, so obviously, we're looking backwards. But while we're looking backwards, we're also, by the time it gets to here, we've likely already addressed some of the concerns with staff.
Thanks.
Yes, I just wanted to share the follow-up on some of Riley's comments, and then Adam's comment, like subscriptions, right? It's one of those things where it's very normal for a subscription services that they just renew and you're gonna continue service, but if by finance requiring the monthly receipt, you know, is basically verification every month from the department head that they're still using the service, it's not like it's been discontinued and it's being billed, and the department head doesn't realize, oh, I didn't cancel a subscription or something, right? So we're getting support, we can also prove it to the external auditors, same thing with the gift cards, you know, not that there's any known lack of control over them, and that, you know, I know they're locked up and things like that, but once we get a receipt saying you have $100 of gift cards, well, we have that to support the purchase, but then that's basically saying, well, we basically, in theory, gave them $100 of cash, right? And so now, we wanna know, well, who got the cash? You know, in any other situation, you'd say, well, you gotta provide the next receipt, right? And so what the city's policy is gonna ask for is, we want a signature in the name of who got the gift card, you know, and what that gift, was it an Amazon card, was it, whatever the card is, as long as we know that we have a tracking of logging when they purchased it, logging when it was given out, who to, was someone taking that, then we have a full transparent procedure of how every dollar is being tracked, that's coming in and going out. So that's follow-up comments. I just wanted to kind of make you aware of, when Riley was talking about our different fund balances and our fund balance policy, and as I've dug into the last, you know, 20 years of Ripon records to kind of see where all of our financial policies have kind of come from, there's a resolution back in 2004 that talks about, you know, we take these different calculations, and if the amount of the fund balances is excess of this, then money kind of spins off and gets put into and assigned for capital projects. And so when you look at this assigned category, which is different than undesigned, based off of that resolution, you know, going back over a decade, in our general fund, we've had like $239,000. That's basically saying it's been designated this whole time, and we've purchased, you know, capital equipment, and we've gotten into these vehicle replacements with the enterprise fleet and things like that, and we've incurred capital costs within our general fund, but on the accounting side, we basically haven't been noting that, well, we should apply that, you know, we're spending that money, and it's basically a designation, right? So there was a restriction put in place, we accounted for it back in over a decade ago, but as we've met the restriction, we haven't said, well, now let, we've used that assigned function, which then basically just moves the fund balance from the assigned category down to the unassigned category, which then makes our numbers look better, I guess, because it's not designated for a future purpose yet of capital. We have been proactive the last few years doing it, we just haven't maybe realized that, oh, we should be pulling from this pot of money rather than the unrestricted rather than the unrestricted first. So my plan is to come back next meeting and basically just kind of update our financial policies to talk about the council's intent on and how we're proactively managing our capital dollars and hitting good financial targets. If you look further down, same type of thing in in the special revenue funds, there was like three years over a decade ago where like $10,000 to $15,000 was put into an equipment replacement fund, you know, basically saying, well, it's got to be spent on equipment. But it's just sat out in this fund without any specific saying, those are the dollars we want to spend in this budget and let's use those funds rather than, you know, other unrestricted funds. So we're going to try to clean some of this up and, you know, just put ourselves in a better financial picture, I guess, for anyone that would review things because, you know, as we wrap up 25 and move into 26, you know, we're going to be refinancing $14 million of debt in the long term financing. We're going to have our financials reviewed by most likely Moody's as a rating company to get, you know, a good bond rating so we can get a better interest rate for, you know, our financing. So I'm just trying to still fix this in 2025 so we can put our best foot forward when we go, you know, next summer to get all of our debt refinanced. So I just wanted to set the table, I guess, for next meeting that you'll kind of hear some of these topics again. And with that, I'll just see if Riley has any other comments or if you guys have any other questions you want to ask on the financials.
I'll just, I'll just add just one more, too, that we had talked about within the financials. There's a $140,000 that's assigned that is for industrial park expansion. And it was from a lot sale through not related to a TIF, but sort of related to a TIF, but it's been sitting in a fund for at least seven, eight years.
Close to 12 years, I think.
12 years. So the goal would be to designate that likely to the CDA and provide that resource there to assist with either the expansion or additional development within the industrial areas within the city and kind of allocate that to that purpose because it's just sitting there. So so along with a couple that Sean had and a couple other policy updates, we'll plan to bring that forward next month and allocate those.
Anything else, Riley?
No, I think you're, I was just going to reiterate that you're you're spot on with, you know, a lot of the comments you made. You know, these management comments are a look back in the past. So, you know, we're looking back at 2024 and, you know, we're into 25 and almost 26 now. So the city has done, already done significant work to try to mitigate a lot of those risks, you know, and and get in a good spot going forward. So, you know, going forward next year, I would expect a lot of those risks to be corrected, you know, and you're and you're reviewing a lot of new policies, which which is great. So, yeah, I think it's just just important to know that we're looking back and, you know, as we're going forward here, this, I feel like the city has made a lot of great changes so far, so.
Thank you. Thank you, Riley. Sean?
Thank you.
And if there are any other questions as you review the full financials, you can certainly reach out to Sean.
I just wanted to mention that there will be hard copies of the full financial report distributed to you in this month. You know, they're being printed up, I think, probably as we're, almost as we speak or, you know, you'll have them soon.
All right, thank you.
Thanks, Riley.
Thank you.
All right. Moving on to our next item, which is pay application number two for the Selfridge Park project. This is in the amount of $236,926.31 and is recommended for approval.
I'll make a motion that we approve pay application number two for the Selfridge Park project totaling $236,926.31.
I'll second that.
A motion by Mark, second by Doug. Any discussion?
How's that coming along with the weather?
The project's been going well. I think the, obviously, the playground is in, the concrete work is done, a lot of the trail base has been put in, parking lot area has been put in, there's been some riprap installed in the water, some stormwater improvements put in, working through approvals with some of the onsite amenities, working on getting site furnishings selected into the Parks and Rec Committee. The shelter was, or the new covered shelter was delivered and I would assume is going to be installed in the coming week or two. So I think the intention is to pretty much get the majority of the work done, but for the paving of the trail, which will occur next year.
Thank you.
Ellen?
When, will that park be open this this coming summer?
Yes.
Oh, wonderful. Thank you.
Spring, hopefully, yep.
Good.
Anyone else? Julie?
I don't, I don't see our DPW here. First of all, I will say that people in that area in the community have been really excited to follow the, I've got, I've heard some great comments, are excited to use it. And I mentioned DPW because, Adam, I know you and I had talked briefly, were you able to confirm that the trucks, when they do the snow plow, it's not going to be an issue where the snow plow, the snow removal is, that it's not sort of straight ahead from that street anymore, that it's moved over to the side? Do you think, do you think, I mean, that's, I guess, how it was designed, even though in practice, it's never happened that way in the past? Do we, do we feel that the trucks are able, going to be able to adjust fine? Because I guess it's, I mean, the the curb has already been installed, so.
Yeah, I mean, as I sent you in the email, I showed you the plan. There's an area that was carved out for, to push snow that was reviewed by DPW and, you know, it's, it's been accommodated and we will work to change the overall, you know, operation to put the snow where, you know, can go now and there's room away from the trail and whatnot. So that's, it was accommodated and reviewed during the plans, so.
Okay, good. Yeah, I knew you shared that with me. Thank you. I just didn't know if that was sort of, again, that they're, they will, they'll make it work, that they reviewed that and they approved that, so fantastic.
Yep.
And I guess what, what do we as a city, what if, what if the snowplows forget and come spring, that whole curb is sort of eaten up?
Yeah.
And doesn't look good come spring opening? I mean, is there anything, then it's on us to update?
Yeah, I mean, obviously, if there's restoration needed and things of that nature, it'll happen with the project and year after year. I mean, obviously, you know, as snow gets piled on places, you know, debris comes with it. So we'll make sure to, you know, clean those areas up before mowing and and things of that nature. But generally speaking, if we run into issues, we'll address them.
For my fellow colleagues to know, usually, the snow is just pushed straight ahead towards the park from the street that runs, but now that's where the trailhead starts. And so it means that the snowplow will have to be moved over and there's the snow site for that is to the side. So just so you know what I'm discussing.
Any other questions or comments?
I guess also last thing, as far as winter, since you said it's not open, I can't imagine people would think that they could use skis on it, but because it's a path, they might? Is that officially closed and do we need signs in the winter? Can people harm that if they, if they were to use their, their skis?
Honestly, I don't think they can harm anything as it's, it's not complete and it's gravel. So, you know, the the park remains closed, there will not be winter activity going on, but people can certainly, you know, it's hard to say, don't go in the park when we're not having somebody there, like, so we're not restricting access through the winter to the park. We haven't traditionally seen that kind of activity there. You know, it remains an active construction site, although it's, you know, winter. So, I mean, if it's something we see, we'll address it. If it's something that's negative, we'll address it. If it's something that's no problem and people are using it and it's causing no problem, it's, it's a, it's still a public park, right? Just like if somebody wanted.
It's not closed or is it closed now?
It is closed.
It's closed for construction season, yes. I mean, there's still activity going on, you know, daily there, right? The parks close in the winter, too, right? Generally speaking, parks close, the facilities close. We don't have people using, we don't have bathroom shelters. People can go on, access the lake from this park, right, or the pond to go ice fishing, right? If somebody wants to, you know, ski on the pond, too, or ski, you know, cross country ski around the park, you know, are we going to sit here and say, don't do that? I I don't think that's a problem or going to cause a problem, but if there one, one arises, we'll address it, right?
So then it is open, just to be clear. So people can use it in the winter and and they can go cross country skiing if they want.
The park is closed, so they would be doing it at their own risk. It is an active construction site. The park is closed, the message is do not use the park, but if someone does use the park, it is at their own risk.
Isn't it always at your own risk?
Yes, but it's a bigger risk now.
Yeah, I mean, it's an active construction site, right? And and so at the end of the day, we don't want people in the active constructed, construction site.
With all due respect, I think it's just a little bit confusing. So can they use it to to go on that ice skating if they want? Can they go ice fishing there or not? Can they use the park and do we need any additional signs? I hear you saying it was an issue, but for people right now listening, in this winter, if they want to go ice fishing and walk across there, can they use it? They can use, they can use that park, but just be aware of the construction site. Is that what we're saying?
Yeah, I think that's a reasonable thing to say.
Sounds good.
However, you're noting the fact the park is closed to activity. So it's a limited access opportunity is what we're clarifying here. And if people, it's navigable water, so you can't keep them off the pond. That's a navigable waterway, so you cannot keep them off.
Mm-hmm.
So there's no way you can regulate that. So the idea that they walk across an area to access the waterway, which is now ice, we can't do anything about that, is what we're saying. You follow?
I get it, but again, if someone wants to go cross, like, snowshoeing, are we saying here, is it open or closed? That's all, I think we're just going to be clear.
The park is closed.
Park is closed.
But we are not putting police officers at the entrance to the park, preventing people from getting in, but the park is closed. So we would request that no one uses it, but we're not going to station officers there to prevent people from doing it.
Because this is becoming too much longer of a conversation, but I can imagine that that trail would be a nice place for people to snowshoe.
For next year.
If you're saying that it's not going to cause harm.
But.
So again, so can they go snowshoeing?
The park is closed. We would recommend waiting until next year to use the trail.
And it's an active construction site.
Okay.
There's two reasons to stay out of there. However, we recognize that people may access across there to get to the pond.
I know you guys think, why are we still talking about, people are excited to use it and I think they want to know, it looks like they can.
But we would ask them to wait until next winter to use it.
Okay, good.
Then we can decide if we open it up for winter purposes. None of our parks are open for winter purposes, correct?
Yeah, I mean, our parks are closed during the winter. There's, you know, the facilities are closed, there are not amenities open, you know, but we, we understand that while they're closed in previous years, if somebody wanted to, say, park and walk across the park to go ice fish, we allow that access, right? It's just public access to the, to the water. So again, we wouldn't prohibit that if somebody wanted to go ice fishing on the pond, right? So I understand we're kind of saying two things, but the reality is, is it is closed for activity.
Steve?
I know this doesn't pertain to the park, Selfridge Park, but they put a walkway in in Horner Park, which is not too far away from there. Are they going to plow that this year so that the kids can walk on that sidewalk instead of not doing it like they did last year?
Yeah, I mean, I can check with DPW.
It's important because that's the only access that they have to get across since the bridge is gone, to get to, on their way to school. And I've had a few constituents last year that were not too happy that they weren't doing that. So anyway, just wanted to bring that up, even though it's the wrong park. You know, we're talking about winter things, so that's kind of an important trail right there, or sidewalk, let's put it that way, to get to Scott Street.
All right.
Thank you.
Any other discussion on pay application number two for Selfridge Park? Hearing none, all is in favor of approving pay application number two for Selfridge Park in the amount of $236,926.31. Say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That is approved. Moving on to pay application number six for Hamburg Henny Reconstruction Project. This is in the amount of $405,444.75 and is recommended for approval.
I'll make a motion.
I move that we, that we approve pay application number six in the amount of $405,444.75.
I'll, I'll second that, ma'am.
A motion by Ellen, second by Doug. Any discussion on pay application number six for Hamburg Henny Reconstruction?
Does this close the project out with a little bit of retainage left or are we?
Retainage left, so there's still.
Eighty-five thousand.
Left, yep, eighty-five thousand, so there's a few other things outstanding, but generally, you know, we're getting close.
Yeah, it looks like it's almost fully complete until the grass grows back in.
That's the retainage and just some other.
Yep.
Observations and make sure things hold.
Mm-hmm. Hearing none, all is in favor of approving pay application number six for Hamburg Henny Reconstruction Project in the amount of $405,444.75. Say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That is approved. All right, moving on to resolution approving changes to the city of Ripon Functional Classification System. Adam?
In your packet, there's a draft resolution and a staff report, so every, about 10 years, the city gets approached by the Wisconsin Department of Transportation to discuss the functional classification system within the city and the roadways within the city. You can kind of see kind of a little bit of background and why they do this for planning and just general, you know, evaluation of the urban area and roadway network. Basically, there is a PDF, a map, it might not be in color, so I apologize, but that and an Excel spreadsheet showing the segment changes. So we've reviewed this and we request that the council approve the changes in the resolution. The the main benefit or the main driving force here between these designations comes down to really financial from, from a grant perspective. The roads are allowed to possibly access federal dollars. And then as well, just the, the overall construction and, you know, standard you may use to design that street is a little bit maybe more robust. So there's no direct fiscal impact to the city in doing any of this at this point, but it does open up roads for certain funding and and design. Overall, there's been a bit of an expansion of some of the roads and a couple changes and you can see them on the map, kind of, the, the big ones I would note would be Oshkosh Street moving from a minor arterial to a principal arterial, the full way, which is a positive. And then really, generally speaking, Stanton Street and Shepherd Street moving from a local road to a collector road. And then Parkside moving from local to collector. Actually, State Highway 44, Matoman, is moving from a principal to a minor arterial. And then West Fond du Lac there, there's an extension moving from a collector to a major arterial. So a couple of roads have been added, some have been upgraded, some have been downgraded. But generally speaking, we. But generally speaking, we as staff agree with these and have maximized our ability to make changes within the limits provided by WISDOT.
And just for clarification, for kind of order of what roads go, my understanding that goes from local to collector to minor arterial, then principal arterial.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, it's, it's, it, principal, P-A-M-A-M-C-L. Sorry. It's all on the map.
Thank you.
And, and just to be, principal arterial are your state highways, your heavy traffic, and they, they have traffic counts, you know, and I believe it kind of steps up, local roads are, you know, 500 or less cars per day, you know, next ones are 500 to 1500, 1500 over to like, up to like 25. So there's some flexibility within their limits, but generally speaking, you know, the roads that are giving the heaviest use due to transportation networks and economic impacts are being highlighted here and being designated appropriately.
Ellen?
I move that we approve the resolution changing the city of Ripon's functional classification system.
I'll second.
A motion by Ellen, second by John. Any discussion? Mark?
Okay, this is maybe extremely technical, but do these designations put any, like, minimum lane widths or parking restrictions or line of sight requirements on these roads that could impact the ability of the city to design a road not, this is where it gets, sounds different, but the ability for, to design a road that fits the neighborhood rather than just the amount of cars that go down it? Does that make sense?
I don't, I don't think it, I think really what it comes down to is the, the type of technical pavement you use.
Okay.
And maybe some travel widths and, and things that you do not recommend, or it may enhance the ability to make improvements through achieving federal resources that then, you know, say, yeah, let's put in safety measures because the traffic counts are higher. So I don't think it's a detriment or, or does anything outside of, you know, there, there may actually be, you know, a higher cost at some point because, you know, you want to, for example, on Oshkosh, you want a certain type of pavement because there's light traffic and medium traffic and high traffic type pavements. You don't want to put light traffic pavement on Oshkosh, it won't be there in a year, right? So, so generally speaking, I think it helps us and helps DOT with planning and prioritization and budgeting and doesn't limit us really at all as far as I have learned from the DOT.
Okay. Ed, your, your Eka Street or Oshkosh Street example is kind of a prime one that I could point out where we see higher and heavier traffic on Oshkosh Street. So obviously that can be marked or better pavement, better construction, but there still are houses on that street and we certainly wouldn't want it to become, you know, a county highway-esque with eight-foot shoulders, et cetera. The other one that I could kind of point out as a, a fence to that or a contrary point is Shepherd Street moving from a local street to a collector street. Obviously with Alliance Laundry being on that street, it sees a higher volume of traffic, but that is still very much a neighborhood where it's not Alliance on one side of the street and it's a neighborhood on the other. So when we go to design or when we're, we're looking at recommended street widths or terrace building or setbacks or where trees should be planted, I don't want it being designated as a collector to put us in a corner where we aren't able to plant trees along the terrace because, well, oh, a collector is a 25 mile an hour road and you have to have sightlines that open up and then those, those neighborhoods would be in a detriment because of that. So those are my worries.
And I'll just add, we're designing the state highway project, which is a, the highest.
Mm-hmm.
PA, right?
Designation, yeah.
And we are taking all of those things into consideration. Design has elements, you know, to make sure that it's not just a road, right? There are accommodations for different things, there are aesthetically pleasing things, there are trees, there are boulevards, there are bump outs, there are crossings. So, so I would use that as the example and it's not of concern.
Okay, thank you.
Just a reminder that Oshkosh Street was formerly Highway 44 before it was diverted down Douglas Street, so it used to be a state highway. Any further discussion on this resolution? Hearing none, we'll take a roll call vote on the resolution approving changes to the city of Ripon Functional Classification System. Adam?
Denkert?
Yes.
Gallops?
Yes.
Iverson?
Yes.
Reamer?
Yes.
Schatzinger?
Yes.
Ellen Sorensen?
Yes.
I'm reading.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. All right, moving on to project updates and staff reports. Anything for PD? No? And Sean, anything for finance?
Just gonna switch from pilot mode to tax bill preparation mode here this week.
You have to do that, Russia?
And Adam?
You have a second report for me for the month, so a couple notes about grant applications. We did post a city clerk position, so that will be open for applications through December 2nd and we hope to have confirmation of the next clerk at the December 9th meeting, if not sooner. The Safe Drinking Water Loan Program funding came out, I shared a note with the council earlier last week or so, and based on the draft funding list, the city was eligible for principal forgiveness, which, for Hamburg, Hamburg Henny Project, so 25% of the potential financed cost will become a grant. That's equated to about $264,000. So with the CBG million dollars plus that, a significant part of that project is being financed by federal dollars, which, with the principal forgiveness, that's the first time, I believe, the city has achieved principal forgiveness. So usually it's just a low-interest loan. So that is, you know, a, a good step in the, the right direction for helping afford projects like this. We'll, we'll work through closing with the DNR and the state over the next couple months, but as long as that funding holds, which there's no reason to necessarily believe it wouldn't, we would anticipate that happening here in 2026, the closing. Beyond that, you can see the updates beyond that, and 112 Watson did receive two bids. So we have worked with the county to file everything there and they will be making a decision on how they want to discharge the property in the coming days.
Any questions for Adam? All right. I have no appointments tonight, but I just want to convey a message to have a happy Thanksgiving and I'm thankful that you're all here and everyone at home is here around us, supporting us. Any future agenda items or comments from council? Ellen?
I, I have two. I would like to bring in the Ripon Area Fire District administrative bylaws for approval by the council. These are the bylaws that were developed based on recommendations from CLA for internal controls over finances and it would be useful to have those brought before the three municipalities.
And?
It's pretty much standard. And then the second issue would be the discussion of a fire engine for December.
You. Anyone else?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second.
Motion by Mark, second by John. All is in favor of adjournment, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Adjourned at 57. Thank you.